Y'all going somewhere tonight?
This meeting of the board of all for the city of Cleveland is now in session. If you have any business before this board, please come forward and you'll be heard.
Reverend Rhodes, Ted has given me permission to ask you to do our prayer tonight. We'll open the bars.
Father, we thank you for every blessing. We thank you, Lord, for our city and for all those responsible to make everything go so well. We ask your continued blessing, wisdom, direction on our officials as they make plans and carry on the business. We thank you for every blessing and give you praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Okay, we have one visitor tonight, Miss Karen Walters, Mississippi Department of Health. Come right up and have a seat and introduce yourself and talk to us.
All righty. My name is Karen Walters and I'm with the State Health Department in Jackson. Drinking water pressure, public water spot pressure. And we do have your own public water spot here, so you're fortunate that you have good drinking water. And I just reviewed your violence history and it looks great. So thank you to your operations folks and management folks who are taking care of that. That's, that's, that says a lot because a lot of water systems are not in that position. They, they do have a lot of violations.
Right.
So the topic for this evening, I'm gonna be brief, but the, the reason I'm here is a requirement for your interest in discontinuing community water fluoridation, which y'all have been participating in, but I, I believe had some difficulty during COVID with obtaining the, the chemical itself, the cost, or either the availability of it was, was prohibitive for, for Delta to be adding it the whole time. So I'm not sure about the condition of your equipment right now. I, I don't, I don't know that it is, that it is fully operational for the, for the fluoride. But I'm here to, to speak on behalf of the, the State Department of Health, but specifically our Board of Health believes community water fluoridation is a good thing and that all public water systems, you know, that are able to, should be able to participate in that. And, and I, I do understand that the, the cost of it has basically quadrupled since COVID and that, that is a hardship on some water systems. But it is, it is left up to the water system that, that you as to whether you want to continue it or you want to discontinue it. So part of the reason I'm here is to, to let you ask questions of me. You know, I'm not an engineer, but I'm, I'm gonna try to answer your questions, uh, whether it's related to the operations of it or the reporting requirements of it. And just to let you know that there are monthly reporting requirements, there are sampling requirements and, and your water system, like I said, has, has done a good job just in, in general with, with all the sampling and reporting. So I appreciate that, you know, from the office to out in the field both. But we, we do believe it's a good thing and we want you to participate, but we understand it is your, your right to, to vote to not do that if, if you don't want to. And so if you, if you continue with, with the, with the not wanting to, you know, there's a public notice requirement of, you know, getting word out to your consumers. And then, you know, thirty days later, you know, if, if you're gonna continue, you know, to, to want to discontinue, then you, you give them that second notice. And then thereafter, just once a year in the Consumer Confidence Report, you would provide that information to the public, letting them know I'm gonna get the benefit of, of fluoridation in their drinking water. And, you know, just in general, that benefit is not only from consuming the water. Now, it, it touches the outside of your teeth, and I'm not a dental person either, but it touches the outside of your teeth with, which has benefits when there's fluoride in that water. And actually drinking it, you know, it getting inside your body and it's on the inside of the tooth itself. So, so there, there's benefits two ways to having it in the drinking water. So.
What percentage of towns in, in Mississippi? I know we're somewhat under three hundred towns. Big or small, whatever, what percentage still do that?
Participate, it is well under two hundred at this point and we have over a thousand water systems. Twelve around a thousand that are community water systems.
Yeah, it most of, it sounds like a most of them are, cause that's three times more towns than we got, so a lot of them are community water systems.
Right, a thousand out of around twelve hundred are community water systems.
I guess.
And of those thousand, less than two hundred actually participate in community water fluoridation.
What has been the reason?
Um, well, we've never had, you know, five hundred of them participate. And a lot of them have just never participated because of the cost. Um, we have had in the past, we've had some grant programs that were available. But a lot of times, the, the water system would do real well in the beginning and then they get to where they would kind of fall off and the operator wouldn't collect the samples like they were supposed to and then they would just not keep their equipment up. So a lot of it was maintenance, not, not keeping the equipment up.
There's commercials on TV all the time for medications and there's always drawbacks and side effects. Are there any known side effects to fluoridation?
Okay, I feel like this is a setup question. But the fact is that fluoride in the drinking water is, isn't, it's an additive. You know, some people would call it a treatment, but it really is an additive. You're not treating your water to get rid of something. Like, let's say you had an arsenic problem in your water. Um, you could treat for that and get rid of the arsenic. You don't have a problem with your water. You're, you're specifically adding fluoride for, for only the benefit of, of your teeth. And so there's, there's not, uh, you're not fixing something in the water. Because normally, if you hired a consulting engineer to build you a new treatment plant, you'd be fixing a problem. You either got a lot of color in your water, you've got manganese in your water, you got lead problems, or you've got, you know, arsenic or some other chemical that you're trying to fix. That's not the way it is with fluoride. So your question, is there something in it that could be harmful? Yes, putting too much fluoride in the water can certainly be harmful. In fact, that's how fluoride was discovered in this town. I think it was in Colorado. People had really brown teeth. And it's because there was so much fluoride naturally occurring in the water. And, you know, there, there's a, there's a point seven milligrams per liter. You know, just a specific amount that's beneficial, but it doesn't make your teeth brown. So.
Okay, so you actually work for the Mississippi Department of Health?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, Mississippi Department of Health has, uh, facilities all over Mississippi. So if it's so important, why isn't this something that the Mississippi Department of Health, uh, through the state? Why didn't it provide to these systems who can't afford it?
Simply, we don't have enough money, you know, in, in our budget, in any kind of grant that we have to, to require all the water systems to have it.
Well, I mean, and that makes me feel like that they put it on the back burner as something that's not essential. Because if it was essential, don't you think that the state would want to be more involved in, in participation? That's the only thing that bothers me. I was shocked when, when I saw that you came from the Mississippi Department of Health. Because we don't, we wouldn't buy this fluoride from the Mississippi Department of Health, right?
No, sir, we, we don't sell it.
Okay, alright. So who does sell it?
Um, Carcross is one chemical company name that comes to mind. I'm, I'm not endorsing them, but I, I just know that's one that sells in the state. Um, and one of the changes since COVID is that instead of just buying it, being able to buy one bag, one fifty pound bag, or, you know, four bags, you have to buy a whole pallet with a lot of these companies just because they had such a hard time getting it that they didn't want to just be selling one or two bags here and there. They wanted to sell a whole pallet full. And it comes in different forms, you know, some, sometimes it's an acid that comes in, in barrels. Sometimes it's the bags of the powder.
Carcross is who we bought it from back in the past when we.
So, so when you reached up on the internet, you know it's true.
Oh, you do.
Now, but the point I was gonna make is, is that there's a mixed bag of opinions and emotions out there when you start looking at fluoride. There is, there are as many people for it as they are against it. And the ones that are against it, um, talk about some very serious harmful side effects. You know, and I, I don't know what, where, where you draw the line of what's good and what's bad, but I just know that there are people on both sides of this fence and it's pretty widespread.
Yes, sir. Usually the people that are against it are way more vocal than the people that, you know, are for it. But I, to answer your question even more specifically, I think both of you are getting to, it, it can be dangerous if there's an overfeed. You know, you, if you, if you don't have an operator who's paying attention and, and visiting the plant on a regular basis, or if you don't have the, the chemical components set up right with the proper safety valves and, and settings on there, um, you could have an overfeed and people could get sick. People could get very sick.
If I'm understanding correctly, we, we stopped fluoridation sometime between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two?
During COVID, it wasn't available.
So why are we having this conversation now? Why didn't we have that conversation two or three years ago? Why is this coming back to three, four, five years later?
We have a discontinuation policy that, that is in effect, um, requiring the water systems to go through that.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, why have we not already done that? I guess that's my.
I don't believe you have ever done.
We haven't, but I think we were contacted by the Mississippi Department of Health and told that we had to go through this process, but this is the first time we've been contacted. Allowed it.
Since, since we've had it and don't have it anymore, is that why we're going through this process? Or is every water system in the state going through this process?
Anybody that has quit or anybody that wants to quit is going through the process.
So anybody that's never been on it, they're not even having the conversation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But not having, uh, the fluoride, uh, is it possible that the water could change colors?
Um, the fluoride does not affect, it's colorless, odorless and tasteless. You could be drinking a glass of water with a lot of fluoride in it and, and not have any idea that it's got an excessive amount in it.
The water could be, uh, no color.
It, it's not gonna affect the color of the water.
It doesn't treat the water in any way.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. Uh, this, this is not something we have to make a decision on.
No, I don't think so. We, we just needed to hear.
Right, this is just step one and then there's a, a public notice requirement.
I made the note about, so it's two public notices required within thirty days of each other. So the first public notice and then thirty days later, a second one.
Let's hope you're, you're gonna want to do this.
In an annual public notice.
In that.
And real quick, as to your question, I never saw that coming before, not one of our legislative committees doing a session. And that's really just behooves me to see that there was not funding requested.
It would be very expensive to do it for the whole state, I mean.
Thomas.
Sir.
Tell us about what, how we came out last week when you went to convention on the drinking water part of.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna, uh, do that.
I beat you to the punch.
Yeah. This is rural water project, has, uh, conferences all throughout the year. They put on one of the biggest ones in the state, uh, every May. Uh, they do a drinking water competition with everyone in the state who comes. Uh, Octop Water.
Tibahaw, I think.
No, it's, it's Octop.
Oh, okay.
Association in Tibahaw County.
Gotcha.
Place first with a score of forty-five. City of Cleveland tied with three others with a score of forty-four, be put in the top five best water in the state.
Alright, thanks, buddy.
We got a good one. Okay, any more, any more questions?
Thank you for your.
Take care.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Save your phone. If you want to stay in Cleveland all along, you will.
Alright, I'll go to public hearings now.
Uh, list is a little long. Um, I'll begin. Eight eleven Harvard Street, Dinesh Chala, seven fifty Hadley Street, Diane Thomas, eleven, or one eighteen Walker Street, Cynthia S. Fuentes, three oh nine East Sunflower Road, Bingle Portfolio LLC, five oh six North Bio Avenue, TNT Two LLC, five fourteen North Bio Avenue, Michael Shane and Melissa R. Grantham, five sixteen North Bio Avenue, Maria Di Marata. Uh, skipping down twelve thirty-seven Church Avenue, Brandywine Manor LLC, eight twenty Aloe Avenue, Brandywine Manor LLC, nine oh one South Davis Avenue, Jonathan Kyle and Dennis in Sothen Hallford, one oh two Glasgow Street, Vicki Williams, seventeen oh four Terrace Road, Seymour LLC, oh, nevermind, take them all. Uh, six oh one Deering Street, uh, Brian S. Davis and Jessica Zott, seven oh three Avery Street, Mary Vince, eight oh nine University Street, Myra L. Llewellyn Black, five oh nine Harvard Street, and LW Rose, six twelve South LaFlore Avenue, Jordan Properties Limited, two oh seven Glover Street, Jordan Rental Properties LLC, six twelve Bio Avenue, Larry Davis care of Burnett Haynes, six fifteen South Bio Avenue, Jordan Rental Properties LLC, fifteen twenty-eight Arnold Avenue, Pearl Carter care of Tanya Carter, one oh four Delta, Felicia Moore, two 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 Delta Street, Lizzie Lawrence, nine oh eight Church Avenue, Jaton Wentz, eight twelve Church Avenue, Leo Foster, fourteen twelve Church Avenue, Church Avenue, uh, Garden Angel Trust, North Christman Avenue, tract, uh, thirty-three dash sixteen dash nine hundred dash one four oh two, Dinesh Chala Trust, nine twenty North Christman Avenue, Baxter Healthcare Corporation, nine eleven North Sharp Avenue, Curtis Brown and Sons, Inc., six forty-eight North Sharp Avenue, W. B. Alexander et al., five forty-three West Rosemary Road, Bolivar County Community Action Program, Inc., six oh four South Fifth Avenue, Joel Trust Partnership, one oh four North Victoria Avenue, Brian Taylor and Cindy Foster, and last one, six oh nine Murphy Street, Mid-South Housing Developments LLC. Is there anyone here to address any of these?
Here she is.
Have a seat.
Name and you.
Diane Thomas.
Have a seat, Diane. What was the deal on? Uh, Billy will pull it.
Seven fifteen had, they had some, uh, overgrown grass junking. Y'all wanna, I'm working on a mechanic, I'm working on a car or whatever. I think there's been a problem, uh, piece of land there that's in Alderman Sanders Ward and I would force to put it off public notices. Uh, Mr. Thomas called, I think the need at five and said they had cleaned up, but we hadn't been able to look at it because Friday is a Friday, it was still in the same condition.
Would you recommend putting it off for thirty days until you can decide or?
I have some pictures.
Oh, that's, that's even better.
One second.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the greatest picture.
Yeah, a lot of grass is good.
Trailers and stuff in the backyard.
The vehicle gone?
It's, oh, it's gone. This is where the vehicles did, was broke down. Um, and that house is painted. The whole house is painted. This is where the, uh, truck that was in the yard just had to be moved. It's gone. And this is the front porch. All of the stuff that was on the porch is gone. These just shares, they sit on the porch in.
Looks to be cleaned up.
Um, is there anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Um, if, if, if there is no one else to answer any of these, with the exception of Ms. Uh, Thomas's property, which I would recommend to be removed per Billy, uh, it would be appropriate to adjudicate the others under twenty-one nineteen eleven.
Gary, Brian, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, ma'am.
You're good. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, anybody living in that property?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hey, then why was Reverend's?
Yeah, he cleaned it up.
Then there's a bunch of them that were on the yellow list.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, engineering?
Well, we have ten more public.
Oh, okay, okay, excuse me.
Um, yes, sir. But Clint, Clinton can discuss those and we have sign-in sheets for those, just.
I've been having. For outside, I'll get.
Okay.
Awesome.
Do you want the board to sign these that I've got up here?
I got it.
I've got it up there.
I'll show it one on one end, the other.
It's a public hearing for a project that requires a sign-in sheet.
Why is it required? It's a.
It's some public hearings require signing.
Everybody in.
A new, new segment.
Even the people out of there.
They already signed.
Bye.
Alright, so if I got something. Tonight with, um, the projects, we are, uh, the lot four. Uh, the first one is a Department of Health project doing, uh, water lines around Farmer, Deerland, Diversity, Harvard, uh, Memorial Drive off between, you know, Laughlin and the area around Bevin Hill Court. Um, this area has kind of had a problem with pressure in the past during peak hours. And so with the city approval, we applied for a, a grant, our SRF grant, uh, to replace these lines, do new valves, do higher hydrants and new connections. Uh, so it's, it's all up to date and up to code that no one should experience uh, water pressure drops when they're trying to close or take a bath or whatever. Um, with this project, uh, we have estimated my son off those around roughly two million dollars to this project through the SRF grant. Um, it's a loan, just kind of like we did the waste water treatment plant. Um, there's roughly about a five percent increase, um, what you would have to hand out, encourage the rates, five percent. It's not really a lot compared to what our bills are. Uh, so it's very noted right away for the project has to be completed. It's all existing right away for cities of um, streets and then also there's no adverse environmental impacts.
Okay, we need a.
Motion.
Need a motion, yeah. I've made the motion.
Okay.
Brian, second, all in favor, say aye. I can be the second one there.
Four, three, two, one, question.
Right.
Questions?
We can ask if there's anyone, I guess, from the, like any.
Public questions?
Comments or questions about that, since it's a public hearing.
Anyone have a question? Yeah.
I move we adjourn the hearing.
Close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Second. Kurt made a motion, any second, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
And the, uh, second project is the South MLK Sewer Basin Project. As you, if you remember, we did the north half a few years back and, uh, what we did, we went through and we cleaned and jet all the lines, we CCTV'd all the lines in that sewer basin. Uh, we also went back and did, uh, line those lines that had any issues of joints misplaced or separations or cracks, went through and lined, and we also lined the, uh, the manholes. And if there was any pipes that were destroyed, uh, went through. Um.
And where's this?
This is a South MLK Sewer Basin.
We've already, we've already done, uh, another, the newer part of MLK Sewer Basin, and this is the south portion of the MLK Sewer Basin.
It's not be that, that neighborhood where we've had several complaints.
Candy Cove.
Yeah, there's a serum, South Street, down in MLK, down by the middle school, by the elementary school, Jack Street, Cross Street, Smith Co., Candy Cove, being all the way to the treatment plant. Um, as you know, you, like you said, we've always, we've had issues with this, uh, system here for a while. And so this is another SRF grant that we can, we apply for the city to fix all these needs. Uh, there's always overflows. We've always had to do bypasses to try to fix this, try to alleviate the needs of the town. Um, this project, we've estimated three million dollars. Um, but like I said, SRF, it's a, the loan for, I think the waste water treatment plant. This one fills on the high priority list for, uh, DQ four to do loan forgiveness. Um, but we won't know that until they've actually approved this.
Yeah.
Uh, that rate is from one percent to six percent increase sewer bills.
Do you anticipate, wait, man, you anticipate any, uh, grant funds for this project?
Um, CBG, we have applied for that one as well for this project. So that should help out with this project for sure. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that's a good question. I mean, all this is going through SRF. That's R F comes back to us.
Right, yes.
So none of these are eligible for grant money?
They, they, uh, the sewer project is CBG.
Cause I mean, Gary, when we borrow the money, you have to pay it back, you have to increase your water and sewer rates.
I understand. That's the reason why I'm saying, you know, uh, I just want to make sure that we're not ignoring some grant money that might be out there because our SRF debt is pretty substantial already. Cause we had to rebuild that whole sewer system.
Correct, yes, sir. And we, we have applied for CBG and that is in process right now as well. And this is, you doing this tonight does not, Gary, does not sign you in onto it. Um, once they, once they, once they approve it later this year, then you have the option to, you know, you can shut it on the client.
Okay. All we're doing is starting the process. You need to be in the arena. I'm making.
Okay, well, any questions from the audience? Okay, Sammy, you got more?
Yes, did you say that it's a possibility that it could be loan forgiven? But we just have to just do the process to find out, follow us after that. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's like September, October, that's when they'll actually approve every, everybody's applications and kind of let everybody give them notices and that's when they'll let you know, uh, for loan forgiveness at that point.
You got a question?
Rita has a question.
Does that mean our water bill is gonna go up higher? I mean, because we paying enough already. At least I am. I don't know about nobody else.
Yes, ma'am. It will increase, um, slightly.
And it's, it would be minimal. Um, it's, I mean, it.
You're looking at one to five percent increase.
This is the sermon we do it.
Right.
We ain't even, we ain't even.
We get sitting first.
Water bills, five, fifty dollars a month, you get fifty, uh, so.
Fifty cents.
Already, over six to nine.
Yeah, but right. And he's just, he's talking about just the, the water portion. So, cause you're talking about water, sewer, garbage and mosquito. So, but it would only impact the wa- water or sewer and or sewer portion of the bill. So it's like he's saying possibly fifty cents. Fifty to sixty cents. Um, if, if it is approved, if it is approved.
And then there's some great benefits behind it.
Right.
I'll pay you a sixty cent. We good.
So Robert, you made the motion?
Sixty cent, but I just, no.
Yes, sir, I did.
Robert made the motion.
Second.
Uh, take, take it on the second hand. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
The, uh, interim, my interim report, I do want to give you all a few updates.
Okay.
Um, the sidewalk project, we have, we have acquired all the right of way projects, I want project from Stacey Park Boulevard, all the hey, Joe's, the traffic lights station. Um, now we're just waiting on them to, to do their process, but that project is rolling in the correct direction. Uh, the Shelby Sewer Basin, as you know, they've been doing point repairs. Uh, they worked in college and they are working on, uh, Fifth and Maple starting tomorrow. I know everybody's probably seeing that big hole we discussed last board meeting. Uh, they will be starting that in the morning. Um, Bishop Road, as you've seen also, they have crossed Bishop and they have opened that up finally. Uh, they are working towards the north now, walking by, going behind the water tower. Uh, as of this afternoon, they have closed during the section, uh, right off Bishop on the east side. They will continue going through there. They'll be, by the end of the week, that road will be back open. Probably, um, they'll just keep on working. Waiting on Delta State for their electrical to fix that box in there by Delta State to, so they connect to, kind of by you. Um, that should be done this weekend. So they'll be, keep on going though, and eventually start doing the crossings along Bishop Road. Airport project, emergency access road. The, um, they have been kind of hunkered down from the weather, haven't really been able to work out there, but this, uh, last few days of dry weather had opened it up over the weekend and they are bringing in fuel. So they worked today, they put in a, uh, a tensar geo grid, it's health stabilization, they brought in dirt. Uh, they'll be working throughout this week, trying to get that project going. Then the asphalt project, as you know, last time, uh, last board meeting, we awarded that project. We're just got the board docs back Friday, late Friday afternoon. Uh, they are setting a notice proceed date set for the Monday after fourth of July, so July seventh. Um they're gonna start on the ass, concrete roads, asphalt overlays, they'll get all those completed. Then we'll get Chris Collins, part of the six month bids to go through and replace those concrete panels. And then once those, uh once the asphalt company APAG gets done with those roads, they'll move on to the asphalt, the mill overlay process.
They probably ready for that one.
Oh, and then also, I'm sorry, City Hall renovation, as you know, we had the City Hall project, they are starting them.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay, and starting with the boardroom first, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Questions?
Yeah, did we come under, how, how are we dealing with the uh budget on City Hall? Is it?
Um.
Have we bid it?
Yes, sir.
So is it within our budget limit, is what I'm trying to say?
I believe so.
It is because what we ended up doing, we had surplus funds that we were gonna allocate to another project.
In the barn.
And we weren't able to do that because um it, it required those surplus funds to be used for City Hall. We were hoping to allocate those funds to another project.
Yeah.
As long as they anticipate taking the, to do the Bishop Road project.
It will take a few months, few more months, I would say. They, their contract ends around the middle of November. I don't see them going that long.
That was a long contract though.
Yes, sir.
Two or three hundred days, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. That way, just give them enough time in case it runs any mishaps like what they did with uh Delta State. They hit Delta State, watched the line, that Delta State didn't even know it was there. It's a main power feed and it took about. Month and a half to get a box to get that in there. Uh so they say they've run anything, but I don't, I don't see them, I don't anticipate them taking to the middle of November to fix this project. Uh the next few steps.
Y'all staying on top of that one out there.
Yes, sir.
On Bishop Road.
We're out there every day.
A lot going on, y'all doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
Need approval, need approval um for change order number two on the literacy building.
Rob made motion, Gary second, all the favor say aye. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Danny.
Um first thing I have for you is approval of the consent agenda, needs a motion and second to.
Oh move, second.
Hey, Brian, all the favor say aye.
Uh the next thing I have in here, uh and it's in your drop box, uh. There is a MOU dealing with the city's contribution for the rehab of some tennis courts at Delta State that y'all budgeted for. Um you do that tonight or? Um.
We are, we're already budgeted.
Yeah, oh, you're, you're there, it's just a matter of.
It's just a formality, I make a motion, we, I make.
Gary made a motion, Danny second, all the favor say aye.
Okay, and then we have a couple of executive session matters, otherwise I've got a report in there, anybody's got any question?
Okay, Mr. Trotter?
I have anything else I have something for me?
Questions to Mr. Trotter?
Uh I don't know if it's gonna be his, Steve O's question. You know, this, this comes up every year about the time. We have all these commercial lawn services. Supposedly, okay? Uh they, they, they call themselves commercial. A lot of them blow their stuff in the street.
Not supposed to.
That's against the law. You know, we, we, how are we gonna deal with this? But you know, people complain about the sewers being stopped up. And you got somebody out there cutting grass and he's blowing all the clippings in the street.
She's been out working on it, we, we.
Okay, good.
It's prime time to start it, cause it's cutting time, Ben.
If I see him, I, I'm gonna be honest, I call Billy.
We're saying, we, we notify him.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to commend Bill and his crew. I mean, they, they're doing the very best and those areas that need their uh attention, they are really on top of it, so. Let's continue to do that, because we got some problems, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thing I want to ask Dudley, um. On Gary's question, those lawn services are parking, one on Rotten Road. They don't have any uh signage out behind them or in front of them, they're taking up a whole lane and they'll stay there for three, four, five hours. Do we allow that?
Uh well, technically they're parking in a lane, uh they have been asked to move. Uh even myself, I've had to talk to the residents about parking there uh twice. Um we, we do the best we can with them.
Yeah, they put cones by.
Yeah, it's a safety hazard without cones or some type of signage or blinking lights, if we could just get them to do that.
Okay.
Cones would somewhat tail.
Yeah, that's city street, you know, I mean, the, the party in city street.
Yeah, they're everywhere. We got so many commercial lawn services now, it is unreal. It's terrible on Rotten Road with that speed.
Yeah.
Okay. That was Mr. Trotter with it.
Mm hmm.
Okay, uh Anna?
How are y'all?
Good.
You have my report unless y'all need something from me, I'm good.
He's really busy, y'all. Any questions on the train museum?
Nah, I'm doing a great job, y'all.
Thank you.
Dudley?
Y'all have my report if y'all have any questions.
Questions to Pete?
I'm just gonna ask Steve to do me one favor. Steve, you know, we've asked our citizens, and they're not talking about this, you know, you know, bring it up before the public. Well, you know, we want our citizens to continue to inform us that you see, prime, you reported. But I'm hoping that we will not put our citizen in my bad predicament. If Gary tells me something, I don't want to let everybody know that Gary was the one that made the call and did that. I don't think if you go over and you see a situation and it requires that the police officers to do their job. That's why we make laws in the state of Mississippi, do your job, and making sure you can do it to the fullest extent. But don't put a citizen in a position to want to help you, the police department, and they've been singled out and saying, they called. And now they have to take matters in their own hands. So I'm just hoping that we will get away from that, because Mr. Campbell had that situation, he talked to me about it one time before. And he and I talked bust about it before busting out. We gotta stop that, you know, we want them to participate, we, we gotta stop.
Which we do understand that, uh we want all, I need the help from the citizens just as much as they need my help.
Absolutely.
Um I also want them to know it, there are crimes, if they see it. They have to walk with us and, and they're gonna have to testify against some of these folks, because if it don't happen in my presence.
Yeah.
Or that officer's presence, there's nothing that we can do.
Right, I'm talking about the one that'll get to the courtroom.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, that's all I have, man.
Okay, you, you had authorization.
Uh the authorization to apply for the twenty twenty-five TOPS hiring program.
Come on, who? Hey, Robert, all the favor say aye. I did buy one, yeah. Okay, Greg?
Uh the only thing I'd like to add was uh, this came to me about last month, uh that made me go back and review some things on our number of fire calls, I had noticed an increase in. About ninety percent of those calls are alarm calls. Um we've got a substantial increase in people that are purchasing alarms for their homes or their businesses, which is great. But that's, that's, that's where our calls have been, our actual, our calls and damage calls have not increased. But uh we, we do run a bunch of alarm calls now.
Maybe you had thirty-one last month.
Yes, we're thirty-two this month. Yes.
Average one a day, yeah.
Yeah, we are, and uh they are a commercial, a residential, um. It's everything from dust and a alarm cooking, um you know. Electricity going off, the storm the other day, we had six calls in one night, the other night when the storm came through. Uh knocked the power out and the power returned, and that was everything, the school, Cleveland Central, the residential's to the power lines down. And um, you know, um we didn't have it twenty-five years ago, people didn't have smoke alarm, power alarm systems like they do now, and they're very delicate, they work well. Uh I just wanted to address that concern that you had, that that's what it is, and, and in the future, we may, we may have to address that, true, right, yeah, so.
But you had, uh, you had a lot, you had fewer calls, but you had a lot more fires twenty, twenty, twenty-five years ago, I would.
That's true. That's true. Our fires have decreased over the past twenty-five years. We had very few structural fires, um.
So it works, the alarms, and they, they work.
We're running the trucks, but we're not running the hoses.
That's, that's okay.
Anyway, but we'll stay on top of that.
Man, you don't have that, that fire alarm program anymore with it.
Uh I can still do that through the state fire marshal's office, we wrote that grant a while back. Uh did that to try to get a win. I'd written so many grants and not gotten one. Um we got about two hundred something alarms, we installed all those alarms uh all over our targeted areas. Um but we can still get alarms through state fire marshal's office, they do it every year. And uh I can do that if someone is in need, it just takes me a little bit to uh to do that. The last two grants that I wrote, I didn't write for fire marshals, I wrote for a ladder truck. And uh.
Yeah, you need to do that for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, uh I just heard, and I'm glad Ted asked that question, because that was gonna be my question. Is there any way that we can get that information out to the public? If there's a need, like you say, for a fire alarm, that gets.
Smoke alarm or power alarm, what are we talking about? What I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you put an alarm system in your home, the, that uh you got. It, it dispatches the fire department through the police department, but what we're talking about there is an actual smoke detector that's hanging on the wall.
That's correct.
And um that is still available, that we can do it, um and people call me all the time and I try to work out something.
Okay.
Um with them, we don't do it for any type of commercial.
Yes.
Um rental property, that's the responsibility of the, the owner.
Yes.
Um but um if anybody would like to call me, uh just get on the chat, call City Hall, uh my cell phone is on all my cars. And uh available, I'll walk through.
All right, thank you.
Don't let anybody go to sleep on that smoke.
Thank you.
Anything else, Greg? Jamie?
Uh good evening, y'all have my report unless y'all have any questions for me.
Animal shelter, anyone? Okay. All right, Thomas?
Uh.
I'm stars, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder.
No, that's all right. Uh I have anything else to say, have a question for me?
Questions? Hey, congratulations on that. Steve O?
I don't have anything outside my report unless I got some, like.
You got a lot of work going on. Questions?
No.
Hey Clint, I know you got some.
Actually, believe it or not, I do not have anything else.
Questions?
Other than my report, um on the dizzy dean, I, I don't think I put the numbers, but we'll have a total of eighteen teams, we'll have eleven. Eight U softball teams coming and seven, ten U softball teams coming on our dizzy dean tournament, June twelfth through the fifteenth.
Okay, we'll look forward to that, maybe the rain's over.
Yeah. Got a little question I wanted to ask you.
Okay, Robert, you got a question?
Christian, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh East Side Park, Amzamore Park, and I noticed those two since I got back to town. What's the problem with grass cutting over?
It's been really wet, we started cutting them today on that side.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
I have a question, man.
Danny?
Christian?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that you put in your uh report that you started the air conditioning at the gym. That brings up a point, when Chris Collins looked at us, looked at that with us, he said that a large cargo door, we would lose a lot of that AC. Uh that cooling if we didn't replace that because of the insulation, um had, we had lost it over the years and we would probably need to replace that large cargo door. So that brings up a question, have you, are you spending all the money on the AC or we're gonna have some money left to look at that cargo door?
No, sir, we'll have enough to do the AC and refloor, um the gym, uh redo the flooring, and we'll still have some extra, we're still under budget on both of those.
But that cargo door, you gonna look at replacing or?
Yes, sir, I got somebody gonna, and once we get the AC in, I have somebody's gonna come look at it and, and see what we need to do with that door.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All, all the questions? Okay, thanks, Christian. Uh Michelle?
I have a couple of things tonight. Um the first item I have is, um I'd like to request to um name Heather. Uh as an additional deputy clerk, right now I have one, and that's Ashley, she's deputy city clerk, and so, um. Really need a second deputy clerk. Ashley would be the only deputy city clerk, um but Heather would be a deputy clerk.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, my second. Danny second, all the favor say aye. Okay?
Okay, uh the next item is, um taking approval to um relocate our city board meetings um to the airport during our renovation.
And there's really no way to tell how long it's gonna take, they say they gonna start tomorrow and start in here.
I'm just curious.
They are.
I have a question.
They're starting tomorrow.
Get the municipal courtroom?
Uh I don't think they're set up for us to do Zoom.
Oh, okay.
And Clint has the exact same system as we have.
I know, we use it all the time.
Right.
And it's room to sit chairs around in there.
Yeah.
Right. So I have a call in, I had a call in today to Tom Hood with the Ethics Commission. Um because I need to talk through everything with him as far as notice. Um what may be required, because if you change your board meeting, technically you're required to do an ordinance regarding that change. Um with this being temporary, uh I'm hoping that. Maybe that it's, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna talk to Tom Hood to find out exactly what all we have to do regarding the change of the location of the meeting.
For temporary location?
Yes, sir. If you change it at all, um you're required to do an ordinance, but I'm try, I'm gonna find out exactly how detailed that has to be when I talk to Tom. Um but he and I were back and forth today, so hopefully I'll talk to him tomorrow. We'll make sure we get all our i's dotted and t's crossed and publish accordingly.
There's a certain amount of days that it has to be published.
Um.
Before the.
That's what, I'll find, I'll find that out tomorrow. Um it never did. We never do get in touch with each other, so.
Yeah, when y'all approve that, just include in your authorization whatever publication she's gotta do.
Right. I think, I think all you have to approve is just the relocation, and then I'll be able to publish accordingly.
I make a motion, we approve, subject to um state regulations.
Karen made a motion.
Thank you.
Brian second, all the favor say aye. That's mighty sharp, city clerk.
All right, my last item is, um I've been working with the chamber, and as you know, the gazebo is actually gone. It's kind of hard to have events at the gazebo when it's no longer a gazebo, so they would like to rename that site to the downtown deck. Where the sun sails are.
Chamber to ask for that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The downtown what? Who came up with this name? They came up with this name?
Well, together, yes, sir, the downtown deck. Cause it's just a, it's just a platform, it's a, it's a concrete.
No.
Deck, for lack of a better word, and um and it's got sun sails on it, so.
So let me ask you, the gazebo is gone permanently?
We're going to, the plan is to, to build another, um.
Structure.
Structure there at some point, but um that is, I think, a ways down the road. The, the sun sails are there on the foundation so that it can be used until we get to that point.
And they're not gonna suggest that we change the name again often?
Well, when it's no longer, when it's.
It won't be there. A gazebo.
When it's. I'm just saying, if a structure comes there.
Well, when there is a structure there, it won't be a deck anymore, it'll be a.
We have to.
I'm agreeing it was in you. Yeah, why do we name it? We need to name.
Well, because when you try to direct people there, just like for us with special events, when, when we have people request to use. An area.
You have to name it.
That's, you know, they can no longer say gazebo. So it's the same thing for the chamber, when they try to direct people there, because they also use it. So they're trying to figure out what to name it. And when you say temporary, we're not talking short term, I think you can say it's a ways down the road.
Yeah. Well, it depends, if we get some of this revitalization money for downtown improvements, and it may happen sooner than later. I mean, he's got something on his engineering list every month that we're shooting for him.
But they said that could take up to three years.
Sure.
So we don't know what we're looking at.
So Ted made a motion.
Yeah, I second.
Karen second, all the favor say aye. Posed, okay. Okay.
That's all I have.
See, uh approval, Heather is the deputy.
Do you, yes, sir?
You did.
I do, yes.
Heather?
Have several on the employee action recommendation needing approval, this does not include the item that's going to be in executive. Unless you guys have any questions.
Questions or?
I'm just trying to see if she had, you said several, have you added some since this morning?
No, there's only four, um.
Okay.
There was one move.
I make a motion. I make a motion.
Karen making a motion. Danny second, all in favor say aye. Imposed, okay. Robert?
There, I just got two things. First of all, I want to recognize my lovely wife and all it was a night and I was shocked when she walked in the door, but she's here.
Okay. Grandson?
Uh, no, it's not my grandson, believe it or not, he, you know.
This is my brother.
Oh, okay.
Paul back there smirking, but he don't realize I'm trying to save myself. So, but anyway, I wanted to say I just, real quick, I think Gary and I may have had a conversation about this. And I watched it closely. Every surrounding town in Balla County and Sunflower County as well as Cohoma County has imposed a curfew. And, and I'm wondering if that's gonna propose a problem for us because usually when it's the curfew in other cities, we're going where there's no curfew. So I wanted us to have that little discussion and talk to Chief as things pick up and you see some things that may need our attention.
We discussed that in, in department head this morning. Looking at some different avenues right now.
Yeah, and I, I was just a concern.
I, I think it's a, a real concern because when things slow down one place. Anytime. Place that's got hot food and
where we're.
All night long.
Trying to wait on the funding now for our police department. So we're gonna see where it go.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's all I had.
Very good point.
We have to do something. We can have a quick meeting, special meeting.
In a moment. Yeah, it's a really sad, sad situation.
Yes, sir. It really is. It really is.
I'm good, Mayor.
I'm good.
I just want to remind everybody to lock their cars at night and take, take the keys out of the car. That'll prevent some of the problems.
Don't leave it on the seat, dude.
It's no good, that's it.
Bye too. Welcome Mayor-elect and all the woman-elect and I hope y'all can keep the meetings this short when y'all.
We have a full reaction issue.
Litigation.
Making a motion to.
Consider those two.
Kurt made a motion, Brian second, all in favor say aye.
We entering second session.
Second session, Brian second, all in favor say aye.